Good evening, I call to order the meeting of March 11th, 2009. All members present except for Ms. O'Connell, who's unable to be here tonight. Thank you. Let me see. We're going to, I'm going to, right at the beginning of the meeting, turn the meeting over to Mr. Higgins. And it will be regarding the teacher contract. Mr. Higgins.
A little quicker than I expected.
Oh, I'm sorry. Since we're a tiny bit late.
Yeah, we're running a little bit late. I don't have anything. I don't even know where I put it. Um, what was it? Renunciation. Okay. This is Article 5, Section 4. Right here. Okay. That's the letter on that here. Ah, I have you. Okay. So we'll just tell them we have a letter and then ask for motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The motion's on the next page.
Right, okay. All right, well, we, tonight, we have here a letter from the Wilmington Teachers Association accepting the tentative contract agreement with the Wilmington School Committee for a one-year contract. So, at this time, I'd like to accept the motion. Ms. Peterson.
I move to approve the contract between the Wilmington School Committee and the Wilmington Teachers Association for September 1st, 2008 through August 31st, 2009.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Quick. Okay. And just for a clarification here, Mr. Kyrie usually does vote on these contracts, but I dropped the ball and I called him a little too late tonight to let him know we're voting on this tonight, so, sorry, Mike. So, that being said, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call. Ms. Cushing?
Epstein.
Epstein, thank you. Ms. Delphi?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Epstein.
Thank you. And, Mr. Higgins, yes. So, actually, that would be unanimous, wouldn't it? Because we have two that couldn't vote on it anyway, so my bad for calling, eh? And I'll turn it back over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our first items will be approval of items by consensus. Mrs. Benton.
Good evening, everyone. Happy spring, it feels like it tonight, which is nice. We have on the consensus, approval of the minutes in February 11th, regular session and February 11th, executive session, not for release, and acceptance of two gifts. One for the, from the North Intermediate PAC, two Epson projectors, and six wireless present mice, six splitters, and six cables. And also from the Rotary, I just, I see this left out, Wilmington High School, a laptop cot for the English department. Want to explain the Rotary donation last year, that they, the Rotary, Wilmington Rotary kindly offered to contribute $5,000 toward the purchase of a laptop cot if we were, it challenged us to raise $10,000, and we were able to do that. It was a great incentive, and so, we are now able to have a portable laptop cot for the English department at the high school, which will allow, one of my dreams to come true, is, and that is that we will be implementing the next couple of years, a required writing, half-year writing course for all sophomores at Wilmington High. I believe it's a skill that we all can need to learn, and being married to an English teacher, who tells me, "The more you write, the better you become a writer," and we need to practice that. So, with thanks to the North Intermediate PAC and to the Wilmington Rotary, I recommend approval.
All right. Could I have a motion? The approval of the minutes, February 11th, 2009, regular session, February 11th, 2009, executive session, not for release, the acceptance of gifts from the North Intermediate PAC. Do we have a, could I have a motion for that?
Rotary.
And, oh, what is, oh, yes. And the, oh, I'm sorry. And the, all right, good. Thank you, and the gift from the Rotary. Oh, Ms. Peterson.
I move that we approve the minutes of February 11th, 2009, regular session, the minutes of the February 11th, 2009, executive session, not for release, the acceptance of gifts from the Northeastern PAC, and the acceptance of gift from the Rotary.
Good, thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Higgins? Okay. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Trish? Our next item, Student School Committee. Hello, Nick, good to see you again.
Thank you, you too. It's been a while. Good evening. Speaking of that laptop cot, our sophomores are working on their sophomore research paper, and I'm sure many of them could benefit from a writing class like that.
Thank you.
So, that's a great donation we have now. Over February vacation, five seniors went to Italy guided by teacher Mr. Ndisiani, and from what I hear and the pictures that I've seen, they've all had a wonderful cultural experience over there. So, a great trip they got to participate in. Students that participated in the Massachusetts Drama Guild, the One Act Festival, competed a few weekends ago at Ipswich High School. Although our group did not win, many actors and crew members won awards and had a great time seeing what other schools do for their drama programs. The Foreign Language Club is preparing for an exciting evening at the Culture Festival tomorrow night at 7:00 in the CAF. Over 30 cultures will be represented by the students, and there will also be some interesting cultural performances as well. So, a great evening should be held tomorrow night. Also tomorrow night, there'll be a marciapella group featuring our high school group, Soundscape, at the Wilmington Middle School, so, two conflicting times, but two great nights to be had. Model UN is preparing for a four-day conference in Washington, DC, on March 26th through the 29th. The spring sports have started, and we hope for a great season as that they had the same in the winter for all of our Wildcat athletes. Select seniors participated last week in the NAEP testing, which is a national test used to test students' academic abilities across the country and even around the world. So, a great privilege that some got to participate in, and got a free lunch out of the deal. So, not too bad. Our National Honor Society is sponsoring a pennies-for-patient drive. Students and faculty can donate any loose change or even dollar bills to benefit the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The homeroom that raises over $350 and is the top of their class will receive a pizza party from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The Rotary Interact Club is sponsoring a local heroes drive, where students will bring in everyday items that soldiers need, and then the club will make care packages to ship overseas. This pack week, this past weekend, our DECA club competed in a weekend competition at the Copley Marie in Boston. Students had a terrific time, many of which won numerous awards, and three of our students even won the state competition, which will advance to the national competition in Anaheim, California, in late, in early April. I mean, late April, I'm sorry. Our cheerleaders also did a wonderful job in competition this past weekend in Andover High School. Some students will be participating in a blood drive this Friday, an excellent way to give back to society. The Spring Fling Dance will be held Friday evening at 7:00. And the Wilmington High School Talent Show will be held Friday evening at 7:00 on March 20th, which would be a very exciting night. And finally, some juniors and seniors found out today that they have been accepted into the Wilmington chapter of the National Honor Society. It's a very prestigious honor, and induction ceremony will be following on March 26th in the auditorium. And I cordially invite all of you, school committee members, to our induction ceremony at 7:00 on the 26th. So, we hope that you could attend.
We left invitations at your seats.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just, I learned today that we're thrilled about, with the DECA students moving on to the international competition in Anaheim. Unfortunately, some of our students are going to have a difficult choice to make because it's also the weekend of the senior prom.
No.
So, it's going to be tough.
Oh, dear.
So, we understand if they decide not to go to Anaheim.
All right. Wow, that is a tough one.
Very tough.
There you go. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Always a busy life at Wilmington High School.
Of course.
That's for sure. Okay. A superintendent's report.
I have two items this evening, a personnel report. As you know, Mr. Arsenault had announced his retirement from the Woven Street in Wildwood. We were hoping to get a waiver from the state to have him stay till the end of the year, but that is not possible. So, because the appointment of Mr. Joel Sanderson to the position as of July 1st, he is presently the Assistant Principal over at Shawshing. In order not to have a domino effect of moving people around, I am going to appoint Mr. Jerry LaPointe interim principal at Woven Street in Wildwood for the remainder of the school year. Mr. LaPointe has served in that role three times before in helping out Wilmington. He's housed there, and I think it makes more sense for all involved to have an interim instead of having, trying to move Joel over now and then having to fill that position. So, we are, we are interviewing for the Assistant Principal position at Shawshing currently. Mr. Appaloni has a screening committee put in place, and we'll keep you informed. And also in your packets is the end-of-the-year audit performed by Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates, which is part of the state stature. And again, I want to commend Mr. Roggerio for the work he did in submitting the end-of-the-year report this year. That is a mammoth task, and to come back with an audit report that has very few recommendations, he needs to be congratulated.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'd just like to second to Mr. Roggerio, for the first time, for doing this. These are like a couple of just little transfers. It's no, nothing big at all, and very impressive that you were able to complete this report. We know how daunting a task it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Even though we're a tiny bit early.
Got to keep going, can't stop.
Oh.
Do these and get away until 7:30.
All right. Our next item of business is going to be under old business, and the first item would be a financial report. Mrs. Benton.
As is the school committee policy, you always wait a meeting in order to approve a recommendation. At the last meeting, Mr. Roggerio recommended authorization to adjust salary accounts and authorization to allocate circuit breaker offset budget to full-day tuition. And we're looking for those motions this evening.
All right. We had discussed these at the last meeting, and so, I would accept a motion to authorize the Director of Administration and Finance to adjust salary accounts where programs move from one school to another. Mr. Higgins?
I move to authorize the Director of Administration and Finance to adjust salary accounts where programs move from one school to another.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Peterson? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, Trish? And secondly, I would entertain a motion to authorize the Director of Administration and Finance to allocate the circuit breaker, break it offset budget of $1,077,133 to full-day tuition, out-of-district residential tuition, and collaborative tuition. Mr. Higgins?
I move to authorize the Director.
It's getting away from me.
She's whispering. I move to authorize the Director of Administration and Finance to allocate the circuit breaker offset budget of $1,077,133 to full-day tuition, out-of-district residential tuition, and collaborative tuition.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Peterson, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, Trish? Thank you. Okay, our next item, preschool tuition.
Last meeting, we recommended that the tuition for 2009, 2010 preschool be increased by $275 to $2725 in order to cover the class of the teachers.
All right, and we did discuss this at the last meeting. I would accept a motion to set the 2009, 2010 preschool tuition rate at $2,725. Do I have a motion? Mr. Higgins?
I move to set the 2009, 2010 preschool tuition rate at $2,725.
And a second? Dr. Quick, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, Ms. Peterson?
I just have one quick question. And if I may direct to Mr. Roggerio. Does this negate that deficit? Is it gone now if we raise the tuition?
It won't be gone, it starts to eat into it.
It just eats into it?
Yeah, it doesn't.
Does this mean next year, another vote may come around to raise it again, to eat into it some more?
We'll have to see if we, depending on how we're covering the teacher's salary a little bit to eat into it, we may have to come back, we may not. We'll have to see when we get to that point. But this starts to eat into it.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Unanimous, Trish? Thank you.
Not 7:30 yet, so I guess we go to new business.
Okay. We're going to move down now till, we're actually waiting for 7:30 for our budget hearing, so we're going, we keep going here until 7:30. Under new business, we'll go to the School Spring. Superintendent Benton.
As part of a cost-saving effort in reducing the advertisement line item, I'm recommending that we join School Spring. School Springs is an online service that would allow us to do all applications for positions, paperless. They create, do the ad in the paper on Sundays, and also create a database of applications. So, an applicant would go online to School Spring and fill out all of the information and have their, scan in their references. The cost of subscription to School Spring is $5,500, $5,000 for the membership and $500 for training. And that's a reduction because one of the other things that I have been working on is collaboration with the superintendents from North Reading, Andover, and Linfield. Dave Tropin, the superintendent of North Reading, got us together about four months back in an effort to look at how we could collaborate. Sort of a challenge with the talk of regionalization, we're not looking to regionalize high schools, I'll say that publicly, but we are looking to find ways of, of joining together to see if there can be some efficiencies. We have brought our business managers together, our head of technologies together, our food service group together, our assistant superintendents for curriculum together, and are looking at ways to partner, partner. When I come forward with the calendar recommendation, the Professional Development Day is one that will be the same as the other communities, so that we might do some cross-professional development. School Spring is, I had brought this up to the group, and four of the communities were interested in doing it, so I actually negotiated with School Spring, said if I could bring in extra communities, can we get a reduction? They couldn't give us a reduction on the software, but they are giving us a $1,500 reduction on the training, so we're, and that's an example of the kinds of collaborations with the other four communities, what we are hoping to do over the next couple of years. And I want to acknowledge that Dave Tropin was the one who thought of bringing us all together. We're looking at ways of doing group purchasing, bulk purchasing, so if there is, for example, say, for example, other school communities use Trailblazer mathematics program. Instead of buying 200 textbooks, we would be asking to supply textbooks for four communities. The larger request, the bigger the discount, so that you will be hearing throughout the year, hopefully, more of these cost-effective ways of reducing some of the line items in the budget. For the public's sake, just so that you know, one ad in the Boston Globe, and not a large one, is $3,000. So, the cost of this program is absorbed in one and a half ads, and we used to put in an average of 10 ads during the summer, so it's a big savings. And that's why your line item for advertising is reduced. We will do training, once this is approved in, at the next school committee meeting, then we would bring in School Spring to do training with all of the principals and secretaries. And I've talked to colleagues who have the system, and they're pleased as well, so. Tomorrow, just as a side note, on the same topic of efficiencies, Neil and I are meeting with a different communication system. As you know, we use Connect Ed right now. The last couple of times that we've had to use it for bulk notices, it has taken longer for the message to get out than was promised to us. When I was at the AASIA conference, I ran into a representative from another company, and we're looking to see, again, about having the five communities join for us and see what kind of price they would give us if we went with them, because those contracts are yearly contracts. So, we're trying to save, 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 and be more efficient. This will also reduce the amount of labor in the Roman House on filing, recording and filing of all the applications that come in unsolicited during the year. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Dr. Quick?
First of all, Mrs. Benton, kudos to, I think that's a wonderful endeavor, and I think that's a great way for, you know, for cost savings in the future. One question, with School Spring, is that kind of the go-to website? Are there competitors, or do teachers and other people know to go to that site when it comes to looking for jobs?
I should have brought the ad from last week, because they put Wilmington in, even though we are not, just to, because they want to show us, want to be able to show you. It lists the school systems right on the ads, and that attracts, and colleagues that have already joined have an incredible, because we're, we're allowed the entire database. It's not just people who are applying to Wilmington. We can look at all of the applications, and if we see someone that we think is interesting, we can, all we do is click on email that says, "Would you be interested in interviewing in Wilmington?" So, and it gets prominent space in the Globe.
That's nice.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Doesn't that avoid the public bidding process?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, excuse me. We, I'm sorry. We don't take questions during our meeting, we have a section for delegations, so we'd be glad to answer your question down during delegations at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Okay, any other? Okay, we'll be doing this, then, at the next meeting, we'll be taking the vote. All right, I think we've reached 7:30.
Can we just do this?
Tonight, we're holding a, we're going to leave our meeting. We're holding a public hearing on our budget. And in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, we will recess this meeting in order to conduct the annual public hearing on the proposed FY-10 School Department operating budget. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the regular meeting will reconvene with Agenda Item 5, well, no, it'll be 6.2. As a matter of protocol, Mrs. Benton will present the proposed budget, and the committee will then entertain any questions or comments from the public on the proposed budget. The school committee will take up its own discussion of the proposed FY-10 budget in the regular meeting. All right, Mrs. Benton.
For members in the audience, there are handouts on the chair. Second row of the chair. The FY-2010 recommended, requested budget, there are four priorities, and you have one of your seats, Alana. Four priorities that we looked at in developing this budget, and they are class size, a strong curricula and instructional program renewal cycle, direct service to students, and continuation of the very successful full-day kindergarten program. We are requesting a budget of $30 million, which is an increase of $740,500 over the FY-09 budget. This is a 2.53% increase. Breaking it down, it's, it's a 1.55% line item increase in salary budget, and a 6.17% increase in the non-salary budget. The increase in the non-salary budget is mandated out-of-district special education placements. As you know, an educational ed plan is a legal document, and unfortunately, we cannot provide programs for all of our students who are on educational plans within Wilmington. Some stu, we have 51 students who are in out-of-district placements, either in collaborative placements, for example, C that we belong to, or in, some in day programs and some in residential. So, that's where our largest increase is. The reason that the salary line item is only going up by 1.55% is that we have a decrease in enrollment at some of the elementary schools. We are reducing our staffing system-wide by 10.6, and that includes the reduction of three positions at the Shawshing School due to a decrease in enrollment. So, the, our request is for a budget of $30 million. I just want to, again, commend the leadership team. We have been working on this budget since October, when all of the principals and central office came together to get our, get the directions of what set the priorities for the budget. We then asked the principals and curriculum heads to go back and get input from their staff to talk about what the needs were. Knowing this, this year, next fiscal year, was going to be a very difficult year based on state and federal deficits, the budget proposal is much less than the one you saw back in December. The principals and curriculum heads and central office came to, were in agreement in our recommendations. If you go line by line, and the public's welcome to come to the Roman House to view the line by line budget or see it at the library, you will see that we have made 25% cuts across all non-salary items, all supplies for classrooms and offices. We went through every single line item in this budget to make reductions. We did inventories around what was in-building, so we're not requesting, having sites request the same amount of supplies as they regularly do, and I will say this, that it will be tight. But I feel that it's a budget that will move the Wilmington public schools forward and allow us to continue to provide a program for our students that will meet the needs of 21st century graduates, including our very successful virtual high school, where we're having students use the virtual high school to take courses that we can't afford to offer, because we don't have enough students to take the class. Or by eliminating the night school, which saved us $25,000 in allowing students who would have taken advantage of the night school can use the virtual classroom in order to meet their high school requirements. In addition, as you know, next year is the 10th year visit from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, will offer accreditation, and this budget funds the cost of that accreditation visit. It also continues our very successful full-day kindergarten program, and we have already received word from the state that we will continue to get the kindergarten grant that funds part of the salaries of some of the teachers and aides in the program. It also will allow us to continue the, the programs that we have put in place over the past five years. In addition, we have some capital requests this year. We are requesting $138,000 to replace the high school computers and purchase some smart boards and projectors for the high school. We are also requesting $60,000, $60,000 in capital outlay for a fire alarm system at the Wildwood, $150,000 for a fire alarm system at the Shawshing, $235,400 for floor replacement at the Woven Street, and $19,500 for a handicapped chairlift at the West. And lastly, we'll be seeking bond authorization for replacement of the exterior windows at the Shawshing. We, as you know, currently doing an energy audit in all the schools and looking to find ways to save energy costs. One of our highest line items is electricity, and as you know, it's not in our budget, but it's in the town budget, is the oil bill. So, we're looking to continue some of our Go Green initiatives and find ways to So, we're looking to continue some of our Go Green initiatives and find ways to be more cost-efficient. I'll be glad to entertain questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Benton. I was determined to call you Bennett tonight. I just, I don't know why. Sorry. Yes, and could you please identify yourself for the record?
My name's Kevin McDonald.
Hello, Mrs. McDonald.
Good evening. I was just wondering if the superintendent has considered any reduction in your own salary?
For next year?
Yes.
I have not, I mean, I have considered it. I've not made the decision yet.
Would you be willing to tell us what your gross pay is, gross amount?
It's public record.
Yeah, I mean, it's over $100,000?
That's correct.
Is it over $120,000?
My, my salary is $150,000.
$150,000 a year? And so, what we're doing is, we're having cuts to supplies and cuts to buses, but you're not willing to decrease any of your...
Excuse me, Mr. McDonald, I really feel that you're out of order. We are a school system, and we work through a process, and for you to put the superintendent on the spot like that is really inappropriate, and I'm not going to allow it. We, we have not even begun to look at next year's budget, as far as anything like salary schedule. This, this is the budget that you see and you're able to get at the Roman House or the library to see the...
Yeah, that's the problem. That's one of my concerns, is I have the current contract with the teachers, but the proposed contract that's looking to be ratified tonight has not been made public. And I wrote several letters to the superintendent, one of which I'll read into the record, is concerning the...
Yes, excuse me, Mr. McDonald, just on that point that you're making, the, it has to be ratified, the contracts between any two parties have to be ratified before they go into public record. So, you just heard it be ratified tonight. It won't go into public record till tomorrow.
Okay.
If you mean it printed, a printed form, it doesn't automatically become a printed form, you have to go through the process. So, you're not going to find a printed form yet.
One of my concerns is that you bring your budget before the town meeting. The town meeting hasn't happened yet. So, what you're doing is you're signing contracts without the approval of town meeting. And what I'm concerned about is that...
Excuse me, can I just clarify one thing there? The contract that was just done with the teachers is not next year's contract, it was this year's contract. The teacher's contract went over into this year. So, we have not even begun negotiations with the teachers on next year's contract.
When will that be made public?
It's always public when we start negotiations. I set up a team as the chair, whoever is the chair will set up the team and say that negotiations were going to be starting. And what happens is, the WTA sends a letter to the chairperson of the school committee and asks to start negotiations. We have not received a letter to that effect yet, and the negotiations have not begun.
Okay. One thing that I wanted to point out in the current contract is sabbatical leave.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to keep stopping you.
Well, just let me point something out, because we could actually have two teachers, we could have two teachers take leave, go to a foreign country, we have to pay these two teachers 75% of their pay. In addition to that, we have to hire two additional teachers. If they get sick, then we got to pay substitutes. And it's right in your, it's right in the contract.
The superintendent would like to, would like to clarify something on that?
You didn't read the entire section of language under that, that section. It is, has to be approved by the superintendent. A sabbatical has not been approved in Wilmington in the past 10 years. There was a request for a sabbatical this year, and I did not approve it due to the financial situation. I'd also like to comment that, you made a comment about trying to get a hold of copies of information. Massachusetts Public Law states that I have 10 days to return, respond to your request. You came into the office this afternoon at 3:30, I mean, at 1:30, we did not have a chance to, I have 10 days in order to meet your request for the information that you have asked for. And I, you will receive...
They gave you a copy of the teacher's...
You will receive that information. I did provide you this afternoon with a copy of the current teacher's contract, which also, we told you, was in the public library. But under state law, we have 10 days to present you with it, and you will have it.
The last question I have is, can you tell us how many teachers are on this board? If somebody is a member of the teachers' union, past or present, or family members?
That's out of order. I'm sorry.
How's that out of order?
This is a budget hearing. That has got one thing to do with the budget. We're in a budget hearing right now.
If some of you people are part of the teachers' union, and you're voting on a teachers' union contract or negotiating, we'd like to know that as a public.
That's public record. There were disclosures made at the beginning of the, there are disclosures made every time a school committee member is appointed, as to whether they have any relatives that are in, employed by the Wilmington Public Schools, and it's public record.
Identify themselves as a teacher, a member of the school, teachers' union, or family member.
If you would like to bring this back up at the end of our school committee meeting, which is coming closer than, we've been shortly, I would be glad to entertain that discussion. We are right now in a budget hearing, so that is out of order for a budget hearing. It has nothing to do with the budget. So, if you would like that personal information, I will be glad to supply it for you at the end of our regular hearing, at the end of our regular meeting. Do you have any other questions on the actual budget presentation that Mrs. Benton made a few minutes ago?
No.
Okay. Do we have any other?
Any questions?
No, all right. Yes.
I want to thank everybody who was responsible for this budget, because I think it was a phenomenal job this year. And if you look at surrounding towns, we are blessed, truly blessed. And I just, it's heroic effort this year. Of all the years I've done budgets, this one is tough. And like I said, when you look at surrounding towns, we are so lucky, and it's just because everybody's so responsible. And I just want to thank everybody who had input into this budget and spent hours and days and months on it. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, I think we will. Yes, Mrs. Peterson?
To add to that, I think that shows a lot for the community of Wilmington, that not only Mrs. Benton and her team, but the principals right down through everyone, has helped to make this, not an easy process, but at least a process that is going to work not only this year, but hopefully in the years to come as well. And, and I echo Mrs. Cushion's statements, it's going to be a tough few years coming up, so this process needs to continue, and it looks like we're on good footing. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody. All right. If there are no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing and return the committee to the regular meeting.
Now, they can vote.
Yeah. Now, we have to go back to all business number 5-3, the FY-2010 budget for a vote. That would be this. We have to vote the bottom line. I would accept a motion that we would move to approve the budget amount of 30, oh, I was going to say $1,000, $30 million. FY-2010 school budget, good. Mr. Higgins?
I move to approve the FY-2010 school budget for $30 million as presented.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Cushion, second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Union, Mr. Trish? Thank you. Okay. Oh, and our last item of business under new business, the WCVB tapes.
WCCTV had contacted Jeff Howell about retention of videos, recordings that they have, and apparently, they have, they go back quite a few years, and was asking for a recommendation from the town side and from the school side, on desire for WCCTV to retain the video recordings at their location going back three years. As you know, your minutes are, we keep as of, to meet the legal requirement, the tapes are not part of the school committee's legal minutes of the meeting. But we are looking, I'm looking for a recommendation from WCCTV, sorry.
Did, people, some people had some thoughts on this, what they think. Mrs. Peterson?
Unless Mrs. Benton has space over at Roman House, she'll have to have three years of tapes.
Yeah, let the state have to file down.
I think we can probably destroy them. They're not the official records. They are just something WCCTV is good enough to do for the community, but they're not the official records. And if we don't have room, not to mention at some point, those tapes can be outdated.
Yeah, I, same thing.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, that the tapes being destroyed, and even, you know, keeping three years is even above and beyond, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, if you keep it more than a couple of weeks, I'm all set with that, too, you know? But, you know, again, the written document is our legal document, so we really don't need it. I do appreciate WCCTV covering these meetings, and I certainly appreciate the keeping, keeping the tapes for three years. It's great, you know? But, you know, our, our legal documents and our responsibility is, well, mostly from Trish.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? So, I think we'd be in agreement with the town side once. Mr. McDonald?
Would it be in order, if I spoke here? Okay. I'd just like to make a few points that are in the letters that I submitted to the superintendent. And it's to inform you of an article that's been submitted for consideration at the 2009 Wilmington Town Meeting. And this article is seeking approval by the town meeting voters to eliminate any teacher tenure provisions from any future contracts between the town of Wilmington and the school teachers' union.
Can I, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you right there. I'm not sure if you're aware, I don't, I would be surprised if that article is going to be on the warrant articles, if they're going to allow that. It surprises me, because that has nothing to do with the town. That's a, that's a state legality. It's not, every teacher across the state has the tenure provision, so it's not something that we could do away with. It's a legality that we must comply with. So, it, people can vote it all they want, it's not going to matter, because it's a state issue, it's not a town issue.
One of the motivation, one of the motivating factors for me doing that is, I've been hearing of students who don't know math coming from the middle school, a considerable amount of students. I was made aware that there were some students who flunked every single subject and were passed with a B. And as you are well aware of, there's a no child left behind clause. And our president, President Obama, is actually in the process of trying to promote something that has to do with merit pay. And the other letter that I wrote is to request a list of all school committee members who are or have been members of the teachers' union. And I would also like to know if any school committee members have family members or relatives that are employed in the Wilmington Public School System.
Is that a letter that you wrote to us?
Yes, I submitted it to the superintendent.
Okay. Do you want an answer?
I would like an answer.
All right, if you did, excuse me one second. Since you sent that in to us as a letter, we'll respond to it when we get the letter.
I could withdraw it right now and have you respond to me, which would satisfy my request.
Could you tell me what this has to do with the delegate, the school committee meeting that you just had tonight? I don't understand.
There is a desire to find out if there's conflict of interest on the board, if there are people who are voting for teacher contracts between the union that they're a member of and the town of Wilmington, that's a conflict of interest possibly.
Okay. I'll just tell you that at the beginning of these negotiations, had you been paying attention at that point when we started, and when we first came on the school committee, both Ms. Cushion and myself revealed that, not revealed, we just stated, we both have a child in the school system. We do not sign payroll warrants, we do not participate in any kind of negotiations, and in fact, not only can we not participate in teacher negotiations, we cannot participate in secretary negotiations, because they are both covered by the Mass Teachers Association Unions. So, that has been, that's public record. We've both, we've both put it on the record from the beginning.
Yeah, I was looking for it to find...
Excuse me, Ms. Cushion has a...
If you go to the town hall, we both have signed legal papers to that effect, and they're on file at the town hall, so you can go see them anytime.
Okay, actually, maybe you misunderstood my question. I'm not looking to see if you have children in the school system. I'm actually looking to see if you are a member or a past member of the teachers' union, or if anybody here or who is missing tonight is a member of the teachers' union, or a past member.
Of the Wilmington teachers' union? Or the Mass Teachers?
Any teachers' union that is affected by this contract, or a family member, husband, relative.
No. She just told you.
There's a couple of members missing. Are they members of a teachers' union?
We'll respond to it in writing. Send, send us a letter.
Okay, I just thought the people at home might like to know that, too.
I think the people at home already know that, to tell you the truth. If anyone's been paying attention, we've abstained every time. I think the people are aware of people's alliances, and I really hope that you're not implying that any member of this school committee would be doing something that would be unethical, because to me, that's what you're implying, and that is why I'm just not going to continue to entertain these questions. If you have any questions that deal with, we already went over the budget, if you have any questions that deal with what we did tonight, delegations is a section of our, our meeting, which gives an opportunity to ask questions about what we talked about tonight at this meeting. And none of those things that you've brought up at this point have anything to do with what we've talked about tonight at this meeting. So, if you have something about this meeting, we'd be glad to answer your questions. Otherwise, if you want to send us a letter about anything, we will respond to it.
Well, okay, I'd like to talk about the sabbatical leave.
But we...
It's in the contract.
But we're not going through the contract item by item. That wasn't part of this meeting. And I, sorry, if you feel that that should be taken out, you could speak to the superintendent, you could speak to the teachers' association. That's an item that's negotiated in the contract, so we cannot be talking about it in public like this, as if it's something we have any say over. Our negotiating team would have say over it, but Ms. Cushion and I have no say over the contract whatsoever, so I can't talk about it at all.
Well, what I understand...
So, I can't let you talk about the sabbatical tonight. I'm very sorry. Do you have any other thing that was on this, or else I'm going to have to stop you now?
I disagree with you, because you are the authority over the superintendent of schools, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you just voted on a contract, correct?
The other members voted on a contract, yes.
Okay, the other members voted on a contract, a contract which has in it sabbatical leave, which would require the town, if the superintendent so chose, to let two people go on sabbatical leave, that have to pay two people 75% of their pay, in addition, hire two other teachers, and in this economic downturn, I don't think it's something that we can afford.
The superintendent already assured you that what has happened in the past 10 years, and what is happening presently, and the fact that she turned someone down.
The deadline was March 1st. There was an applicant, the applicant was turned down. End of topic. That's it for this year on sabbatical.
Just to let you know, I would like that in the future to be taken out of the contract.
Okay. I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I will, I will pass it on to the subcommittee for negotiations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Cushion?
I'm listening tonight, thank you.
Mr. Higgins?
There's, there's so many things. I think, I think the only thing I need to say is to the superintendent, I think you constantly go above and beyond what your duties call for. I think every penny what we pay you is worth three. So, you know, and anyone who disagrees with that doesn't, you know, I just, I can't understand that. I, you couldn't pay me enough to do what you do. I just, you know, there's just, there's, there's too much to deal with, honestly. And, and as far as this budget presentation and, and all this budget hearings and all the... And as far as this budget presentation and all this budget hearings and all the cuts and the, where are we going to save money? What are we going to do? How are we going to make this budget work? You look across the country, you don't even have to look that far across the country, just look across the state, and you see layoff after layoff after layoff. There's one community, I believe in California, that they're great ideas to lay off every single teacher in the community. I don't even know how to respond to that. So, again, to echo the sentiments of everyone else, we're very fortunate to live in this community, to be under such great leadership for the past 17, 18 years now. As a Town, we're very fortunate to be where we're at, especially with the current world financial crisis going on. So where we're at right now, we're very lucky, and it's more than luck, it's been a lot of strategy. Even in good times, when everyone was saying spend, 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 we didn't. We were very fiduciary, we showed a lot of fiduciary responsibility townwide, and that's why we're still breathing today. That's why we don't have crazy layoffs and telling the kids to teach themselves and insanity like that. So, to everyone who has put in the time, from, you know, starting yesterday to 17 years ago, thank you for helping us be where we are today, and for everyone that's helping to bring us through tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Mrs. Peterson?
I just wanted to mention that the Wilmington Educational Foundation is having its vendor fair on Friday, April 3rd, at the Knights of Columbus in Wilmington, from 7:30 to 11:30 at night. This was a great time had last year. We have about 20 different vendors come in, where you could buy wares if you want, or just get information, as well as they have auctions, which they give away unbelievable prizes. All the money goes to the Wilmington Educational Foundation, which helps fund a lot of the teacher programs, buys smart boards for the high school, middle schools, and does a lot of great things for the community. If we have, turn out like we did last year will be unbelievable, and I encourage everybody to go.
Excellent. It was a wonderful time last year. That was really fun.
We're looking forward to it again.
Dr. Quick?
I'm looking forward to attending this for the first time, and I just want to say ditto to Steve. That's about it.
Thank you.
Can I just add a little bit about the April 3rd? This year, we have, we're doing something a little different. The entire Wilmington Public Schools leadership team has come forth with auction items. So the auction items this year are going to be very, very special, including private pitching and catching lessons from Mr. McGinn and Mr. Roggerio. Read aloud to 25 students by Mr. Jerry Lapoin, and if you ever heard him do a read aloud, it's really amazing. There are photos of Mr. Tracy. If you don't know, one of his passions is lighthouses and photographs that he has taken of lighthouses will be up for auction. Guitar lessons from Mr. Ellis and from Mr. Ferrio. Family pack at Lowell Spinnas with spinner box to use. There are baskets made by different curriculum leaders, including Marlene Potter, our director of sped, is doing an afternoon tea basket. We have a gardening basket. We have a children's literature basket. I'm doing a promo because we really want people to come to this. I think the items are really amazing. You can lunch at any restaurant in Wilmington with the superintendent for a student in town. We also are going to be a free day for summer camp at KES. There's, I'm trying to think of all of them. Ah, Mary Hood, a hand knitted scarf the color of your choice. It's really wonderful. That's just a tease, so we really want the community to come out on April 3rd. Great auction items.
Sounds fantastic. We'll have to keep reminding, that's excellent. And I just want to mention that we are now having the ongoing Wilmington Reads for the things they carried, and one of the best things that I've enjoyed over the years, and is happening again, is at the Bazell Senior Center on the 18th. Mr. Tracy does a combination of senior, senior discussion. I hope to be able to make that. But there are a number of activities that you'll find in the library website. In the library, there's a bookmark over there that has all of the things that are happening, so it's really worth it. And it's very heartwarming to see, because of Mrs. Benton and the contact that she's had with the library, that more and more activities are being co-sponsored between the library and the schools. And that's just another area where Mrs. Benton goes beyond, above and beyond. And as a committee, we couldn't be more proud to have her as our superintendent, and I have to tell you that I'm across the state doing a number of things in education, and whenever her name comes up, it is in such a positive way, and I can't say too much because I wouldn't want anyone to grab her away from us. But I'm telling you that we have a gem here, and we're proud to have her. Any correspondence? Future meeting dates and agenda items. Our next meeting will be March 25th at 7 o'clock. Yes.
Do we know what our April date's going to be yet, by chance? Only because we have April vacation.
Oh dear.
Disney again?
It should be the 8th and the 22nd.
The 22nd is school vacation.
School vacation. When is the, the election's at 25th? The 8th and the 29th. Probably the 8th and the 29th, but we'll miss you. Be one less.
I mean, April 8th.
Oh, on April 8th. Oh, okay.
When are you going? When are you?
I can't do the first.
How about the 5th? Do we need to, April?
Yeah, the 29th, we need to re- We'd have to reorganize and everything, so, yeah. I think that that works out the best. How about WCTV? How's that work for you?
Can you do the-
The only time we have is WCTV's annual meeting is the 15th.
Right, so we're not going to meet the 15th.
Susie had suggested the 15th.
Oh, the 15th. Oh, okay. Because I'll be gone the 8th, and Mrs. Peterson will be gone on the 22nd.
So she'll be here on the 29th.
Sunday last meeting is the next one. You know what? We'll look this over again and get back to us at the March 25th meeting. Or ahead of the, okay. Because we might be able to do the first and the-
I can't do the first.
Oh, you can do the first. The 8th and the 15th, two in a row like that, I don't think we need that. I'm thinking, we'll get back to it, but I think probably the 8th and the 29th looks like it might have to be. I'm thinking, okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Higgins, second. Dr. Quick, all those in favor? Thank you.